If you had filled out a card, please, and presented to the clerk, we'll get going. Are we ready to go? We're gonna call the meeting for January fifteenth to order. Would you join us in the pledge allegiance, please? Mr. Brown, would you do it?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, and the good hour in the distance with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. Okay, our first order is, call the roll, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown?
Here.
Mayor Hoag?
Here.
Councilmember Morrison?
Here.
Councilmember Randalls?
Present.
Councilmember Raymond?
Here.
Okay, public participation, we have four cards. John Benton.
Okay, well, I'm here because I've been here asking you for a code reduction hearing, and you're, everyone tells me I need a lawyer. And I've gone and talked to your own lawyer, Chris Cloney, that was on that code board that night. They mocked me and laughed at me and taunted me because they thought I was homeless. And I don't appreciate that. I've come in here and asked you for a code reduction hearing so I can come back in here and tell you that Kevin Mann came in there and lied to your board and lied to this man's attorney. Told them I lived in a warehouse after I had already testified and said, "I don't live in this warehouse." I had a driver's license, electric bill, a phone bill, and a homestay exemption to prove I didn't live there. Why wouldn't that, why isn't that good for that lawyer? Why is that, man? Why would she mock me? Why would she refer to me a cookie? Take the word of a deacon that lied, come in there and lied under oath, your lawyer. How many times have I been in here and asked you and you tell me to go get a lawyer, and your own lawyer, Chris Cloney, tells me, "I don't need one"? You had the FBI pull me out of here last year? Rocky Randalls, you're down there in the hallway there at the library before the FBI pulled me out, and you got a microphone. You were sitting there clamoring, "What can we do, John? We want to settle this. We want to settle this." Don't sit there and act like you don't know what I'm talking about. I asked the FBI for that recording. You mocked someone, man. Sit there and laugh at me, Randalls. You haven't done anything. You know Kevin Mann. You know him like this. I didn't know he was a deacon. I didn't know his son was a sex offender, and he didn't know I was molested by a Jew school. The FBI's got that, too. I wrote an email in that warehouse, and it talks about a private school I went to in Orlando. That's what I was doing in there. And it said, "A private school." Well, I'm here to tell you that was a Jew school, and I understand this lawyer went to a Jew university, and he's got it all over his website. Nobody's gonna do anything, a Jew's not gonna get another Jew in trouble for mocking and taunting a homeless person. I'm done. Anybody got anything to say? You got Mr. Green over there was getting screaming phone calls, "I was living in the warehouse." Six weeks before that meeting. You can't go over there and knock on my door on Tyler? You guys are racist, man. Bunch of Jews going after me because I'm a, because I was coming out on them again. My man went to jail in 1994 when everybody was getting free tickets. Oh, he's a preacher. He don't, he gets away with it. My man went to jail, and it was a Jew school. Thank you.
Dennis Schultz.
Good evening. My name is Dennis Schultz. I live at 561 Casta Bell Drive in Bayport area, behind the Radisson. And my objection is, why are these buildings being built so high? Who gave the approval? The Hilton suite, their building going behind the center of Radisson's wants to build one of the past five stories? I was told for this area, five stories or less. So can somebody give me an answer on that one? Anybody?
I can't respond to that.
Go ahead.
Give yourself, Dave, please.
I said that. Okay.
Call who you are, Dave, please.
My name is Dave Dickey. I'm the community development director for the city of Cape Canaveral. Yeah, good question. The code, it's really, height is really dictated by what's called our zoning ordinance. And our zoning ordinance regulates how a piece of property can be developed by a developer or a property owner.
Right.
And it deals with things such as setbacks and size of building and square footage, and height is one of those things. And the property that you're talk-
Excuse me, stop a second. Height is one of those things.
Yes.
Height is, I was told when I moved down here, that has to be put to a vote for anybody to build five stories or higher.
Okay.
If not, they should be sued.
I'm gonna answer your question.
Not to scare you, I do have a class action suit going on with four different lawyers. I'm not gonna tell you who they are, looking into this, and just let you know what's going on. Because it's illegal.
Let me suggest your lawyers call me so they don't spend a lot of your money needlessly.
I don't think they will call you because they're just gonna do it on their own.
Okay, well, let me answer your question.
The only reason why I came here tonight, if I find out, is the city council?
Sir, you asked-
Is there a problem here, or the Hilton?
Let me-
You asked the gentleman to explain it. Let him explain it if you would like.
Yes, well, I'm just trying to-
Let him explain it, and then you can do all-
Go right ahead, sir. Sorry, David, what?
David, Dickey.
Give him your opportunity.
D-I-C-K-E-Y. So as I was saying, the zoning ordinance really regulates exactly how any piece of property in the city can be developed. And that piece of property that you're describing is zoned C1. And so our city code says you can build to a certain height than C1. Forty-five, yeah, forty-five feet.
Forty-five B?
Feet.
Forty-five feet?
Yes. However, the city council, the city approved what's called an overlay district. And this piece of property is within the overlay district. And the overlay district allows a more intense development. And so, you know, to save you some time, I'm just gonna get right to the point. The overlay district says that you can build to 65 feet if the, we have a board, a lay board, an advisory board, called the Community Appearance Board. And it consists of seven residents, seven members of the city. And the developers brought this application, made an application, submitted it to the Community Appearance Board, and the Community Appearance Board, after they reviewed it and made sure it was consistent with all of the code requirements, said, "Yeah, we think you can, we approve you to build to 65 feet." So this process is spelled out in the city code and city ordinance, and they followed it to the T. So there was no sidestepping, there was no going around any requirements. They followed the exact process that the city code has. And I will say, the overlay district, it's a give and take. If the community appearance board says you get to go to 65 feet, there's things you have to do above and beyond what you typically wouldn't have to do. And those are all things such as architectural standards, increased landscaping, really trying to beautify the project above and beyond the typical project. So that's why I suggested have your attorney call me, because I can let them know that they followed the exact process that the city has established to go to 65 feet. And they did, and here we are.
Well, can I, now you're finished, right? I don't want to go on, because I don't want anybody to interfere. But what I was told, this area here is five stories less. And unless there was some kind of agreement and when on vote, there was a arrangement made where people would say, "Yes, you can build five stories above. You can." If not, no, it's illegal. Now, who gave them the okay to build that? That's what I want to know. So the reason why I'm here tonight, I want to find out, who gave them the okay to build it that high?
Sir, I just told you, it's a group called the Community Appearance Board.
Community Appearance Board.
And that is a board that is established by the city council, and the city council has given them the authority to approve development up to 65 feet. So everything was done above board, and-
Well, they're building another hotel with that. Is that also gonna be as high as that one?
I'm gonna, I can be very, very straight up with you. If a project is gonna go over 45 feet, we as a staff require it to go through the process it has to go through.
And what about the Radisson? Are they gonna build anything higher than five or six feet, five stories?
Well, when you say the Radisson, I don't know what you mean.
The Radisson's building three new additions.
No, they're not.
I understand, they're building three new ones, and I-
No, they're not.
I was told that they're building-
Who's telling you this? You're getting some bad information.
I'm getting from the contractors working on the job, which I used to be up in New York.
Well, I promise you, the contractors don't know what they're talking about if they're telling you they're building three new hotels.
And what he told me, it's going as high as those buildings over there. He says, "It's a garage in five stories." No, it's a garage in four stories. So it's five stories. That's the limit for this area. Nothing above that, that's it. Boom, boom. I don't know how you okayed something like that.
I didn't okay it.
Well, the Community Appearance Board?
Yes.
Sir, it's provided in the city code. That's adopted by ordinance. It goes to the Planning and Zoning Commission, it goes to the city council, and it was approved by city ordinance.
But that's what I-
Wait, I'm not finished now. You can go ahead, or your attorneys can read our city code and do the research, and you will see how the process is. You can do a public records request with your big lawyers, and we can provide the information that shows that the process was followed.
Now, are you finished, sir?
Sir, your three minutes have been up a long time ago.
No, well, that's not fair. That's not fair. He spoke most of the time.
Sir, you asked for an explanation. On your three minutes, you got it, and-
No, that's not fair. I didn't have my three minutes.
You had three minutes on the clock.
One more question for you.
Sir, I'm gonna tell you right now, right now, you have one half-minute to finish up. I'm gonna let you finish, and then we're gonna proceed on.
I should have more time.
If you wanna, sir, then you, your time is up then. If you want to argue with me, your time's up.
Okay.
Have a nice night.
I know exactly what I gotta tell a lawyer.
I would take his advice before you do anything.
It's not my lawyers, they're doing a class action suit, and they're gonna get you bastards.
Have a nice night, sir.
I'm gonna sit right here.
You had, you had, I tried to give you a little extra time, but you want to argue, so goodnight. All right, next one we have is solid waste management. Dan, how you doing? Are you gonna both speak together, or one at a time? No, he's welcome to come up with you. How you doing? I know he's getting pissed me off, too. I don't want you to get out of line.
Good evening, mayor. Mayor Pro Tem and distinguished council members. I'm Deana Ryder Hicks, Public Affairs Manager for Waste Management here in Cocoa. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you here this evening. The city's solid waste collection contract expires on September 30th of this year. The economic, climate, and waste services industry has changed considerably since you last went out for RFP 10 years ago. I'm here tonight to encourage you to please consider placing the contract out for RFP, which will allow you to make your own educated assessment as to whether or not the city has the best provider for its needs in today's marketplace. One of the top items for consideration, of course, has to be safety. The safety of your community is absolutely paramount. Do you know what kind of safety equipment your current provider has on their vehicles or what their safety record is? One unfortunate incident is one too many, and asking for proposer's safety records in an RFP will allow you to develop your own analysis of the safety of the vehicles and the drivers in your city. Second is the value for the price that your residents and businesses pay, which goes beyond just service at the curb. Consumers of today and of tomorrow want immediate communication 24 hours a day, whether by a live person or a live chat. In an emergency, there is something to be said for having a company that is backed by global resources to address a catastrophic situation. And what about recycling? This is an industry that has changed dramatically in the past year. Your residents want to recycle. But which provider has the expertise and ability to educate residents and work with the city to keep it affordable? An RFP will allow you to evaluate the options. And thirdly, our local environment. Cape Canaveral has made great strides in being environmentally conscious about our lagoon and, of course, our ocean. Yet the city is still serviced by diesel trucks. Every waste management compressed natural gas truck, like those we use throughout Brevard County, reduces annual greenhouse gas emissions by 14 metric tons over a diesel truck. Not to mention that CNG trucks are quieter, something that residents truly appreciate. The city's solid waste franchise agreement states that you must advise your current provider around March 30th of your intent to renew or place the contract out for RFP. I would encourage you to make your own comparison and analysis of waste management and all interested providers by deciding in the next two months to place this contract out for RFP. And with that, I thank you for your time and for your consideration.
And you did it with 17 seconds left.
I did. I timed it.
George, how you doing?
Good evening, mayor.
Three minutes here. I was counting my job.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, mayor, staff, council members, and citizens. My name is George Glebko, represent Waste Management. Been with Waste Management for 35 years. I was part of the initial contract that was set up here with carts and the recycling program. Things have changed quite a bit. Let me compliment you on your new facility here. This is the first time I've been in it, and I'd like to wish all of you a Happy New Year. I'd also like to invite you to tour our facilities, our recycling plant that's in Cocoa. We're processing roughly 7,000 tons a month through the facility. And also, would like for you to come over and visit our operations, see our CNG refueling station, and some of the new technology that we've put into our equipment. The invitation is open to you. I know some of your staff members have already toured our facility, and we've been in conversations with Mr. Green, and would hope that you would consider putting the contract out for an RFP. It wouldn't hurt. I know you've had a very good experience with your current holler. They're a good company. But maybe, let's see what the market can provide. Thank you very much, and appreciate the time here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
George, can I ask you?
Yes, sir.
I was discussing with David just a little bit ago, but this recycling has got me a little concerned about what's gonna happen. Is there any big plans in the future, or are we just hoping that everything works out? Do you, I know you guys are into storage and whatever.
Right.
What's gonna happen with that? Do you have any?
Well, remember, recycling is a commodity, and it's all about supply and demand. And as far as plastics go, as long as the price of oil's down, it's gonna be tough to move plastics. But we do have contracts in place. We have contracts with Coca-Cola and other beverage companies out there that are taking our plastics. The bottom line with recycling, when the price is down, the recycling has to be extremely clean. And it can't be contaminated. And that's one of the battles that we're battling here in Brevard County is contamination. I think that number's running up around 35, 40 percent. But what's happening, people are throwing Christmas lights in there, they're throwing things in there that aren't recyclable, and it's just gonna take a good education program to control it. But recycling will be around for a lot of years, and I think the thing that we have to remember, we're running out of landfill space here in Brevard County. This is the reason why the county went in this direction. It's gonna take the, it's gonna cost the taxpayers about $500 million to build that new landfill. So the more that we can divert from that landfill and keep buying time until next, new technology comes down the pike to where we can get to a zero waste stream, I think that needs to be our goal.
I'm a little concerned what's gonna happen with it.
Yeah, we've made a huge investment into the recycling markets nationwide, and here in Brevard County with our plant and facilities. I can tell you, we've got the most modern technology out there to ship out the cleanest material that we possibly can. Mayor, I would like to invite you to take a tour through the facility. I think you'll learn a lot through that.
Good. All right, thanks a lot.
Thank you, and we appreciate you.
Goodnight. Good seeing you again.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Excuse me, can I have your card, please, because I would like to take the tour?
Sure. Deana will get you a card.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on, consent agenda. We have two items. Anybody care to remove either of the, one of the two items? Or the bill for the authorization for the reclaimed effluent discharging at the ballpark in the minutes?
If nobody wishes to remove, Mr. Chair, I would move for approval of the two consent items on tonight's agenda.
Vicki Rock.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Randalls and a second by Mr. Morrison to approve the consent agenda in Britain. Call the roll, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hoag?
Four.
Councilmember Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Randalls?
Four.
Councilmember Raymond?
Four.
Okay, we're going to our public hearings. Ordinance number 012019. Mr. Gargadese.
Okay, mayor. Get the light on here. There are two ordinances, 01-2019 and 02-2019 regarding the same property. One's a comp plan amendment, and the other is a rezoning ordinance. So I'd like to read both ordinance titles in now, and we could proceed with having one hearing regarding this particular request, just to streamline. And of course, you could take separate votes regarding the ordinances. So the first ordinance is ordinance 01-2019, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Cape Canaveral, Florida, adopting a small-scale future land use map amendment by changing the future land use map designation of certain real property located at 8811 Seashell Lane, and more particularly depicted and legally described on Exhibit A attached Tier Two, from C1 commercial low-density to R1 residential low-density, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, severability, and corporation into the comprehensive plan in an effective date. And again, that ordinance is a proposed comprehensive plan future land use map amendment, which is a legislative matter. The next ordinance is ordinance number 02-2019, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Cape Canaveral, Florida, changing the zoning map designation of certain real property generally located at 8811 Seashell Lane, and more particularly depicted and legally described on Exhibit A attached Tier Two, from C1 low-density commercial to R1 residential low-density, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, severability, and an effective date. This ordinance, the zoning ordinance, is a quasi-judicial matter, of course, and the effective date of this proposed ordinance is contingent upon ordinance 01-2019 being adopted and becoming effective. I believe Mr. Dickey has a presentation or a brief presentation regarding this, or no? No? Okay. It's pretty-
I mean, we're certainly available for questions. This is a, I mean, I can, I can-
Yeah, it's pretty straightforward.
I can give you a quick update. Our applicant here this evening, Mr. Dennis Warren, Dennis is there holding his hand up, has purchased a piece of property that I'm sure most of you are familiar with. This has been a, I'll call it a problem piece of parcels for a number of years. And it currently is zoned commercial. Obviously, that's not an appropriate, in my opinion, that's not an appropriate zoning category for this piece of property. It's really interior to the Harbor Heights subdivision, which is all zoned R1, which is our most restrictive zoning category. They're single-family development, mostly surrounding this piece of, this piece of property that Mr. Warren is interested in building a single-family home on, which is certainly consistent with the development trend in this area. We did take this request, as we do on these type of matters, to the Planning and Zoning Board. At their December meeting, they unanimously approved or recommended approval of both of these ordinances. It was a public hearing as well, and we went through our typical notice process, and we did not have anybody from the public speaking in opposition to the requests, which didn't surprise me, because this is, as I said, this is a, this piece of property really needs to be residential. It's appropriate and consistent, and for that purpose, we've been, we're recommending approval of both ordinances. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody have anything they want to say? The public, if you've got nothing to say, we talk first.
Well, mayor, I would, I would say, I would speak for approval, knowing the area, that's Harbor Heights, and all the homes to the east of that are all, I think there's 109 homes in there, they're all residential. Probably years ago, that area was commercial because it was in 300 feet of the, our state road 401, which was Atlantic Avenue. All the building east of it is R1 residential, single-family. So I don't know if that parcel goes clear to A1A or clear to North Atlantic or not. There's two parcels there.
Back in the day, it did. However, there's been some subsequent dividing up the parcels, and so currently, they do not. They go about halfway to the, to the, actually, if the council remembers the piece of property that the Pittner Real Estate Office? That is immediately west of these three townhouse parcels. So that sits between these parcels and North Atlantic.
That gives me some feeling, because the commercial, I don't, I wouldn't be in favor of it if indeed it do, did go clear to Atlantic Avenue. But if the-
It has a little sliver there, I believe, that not contingent to that piece of property.
Right.
It's commercial still up on the corner.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Okay, we're done up here. We're gonna open this to public. If anybody has anything they want to comment on this?
I just have one question.
Oh, okay.
I had a question. Are you building a single residential unit on that piece of property?
What are you asking for, a R1 zone?
Yes.
The next question I have, the frontage, are you going to have that facing toward Harbor Heights neighborhood on that street? And then your backyard, or your backyard will be next to Pittner, did you say?
That is correct.
Be on Atlantic, facing Atlantic.
Yes, thank you.
Dennis, did you have anything you want to comment on this? It's your property. How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Yeah, the intent, when I bought the lot, was to put a house on it.
And it was a little bit of an arduous task to get this far, and without Dave's help, I don't think I would've made it this far. But, you know, it was zoned or commercial along North Atlantic, but there's a lot, A, there that Pittner Real Estate owns, and that divides between me and North Atlantic Avenue. So the, the plan that I have to build there, the back of the house faces west, which is North Atlantic Avenue, and the front of the house faces east, which is the rest of the subdivision. So it lines up with the other houses that are already there. That's, that's the plan to conform with the rest of the neighborhood. So, and I'm also making it three lots in the one, because I think it was in 2007, the owners that had the lot, which I think was Dream Homes, they were gonna put three townhouses on that property. So Dave's working with me on that, too, and we currently have everything we need to make it into one lot, except for the final approval from the city.
What are the dimensions of that lot? If you take the three lots and put them together? I'm just curious.
I don't know in the top of my head, but it's kind of like a pie shape, so it's an odd shape.
I know the, I know the piece.
Altogether, it's almost half an acre.
All right, I was just curious.
Point four, yeah.
Thank you.
It's very consistent, as far as the size goes, with all the other lots in Harbor Heights.
You've got a big headache, George.
Dennis, have you already completed the unity of title?
No.
Mr. Randalls, let me speak to that, because I did, I was remiss in not mentioning that this agenda item is contingent upon a unity of title agreement. That agreement will be presented during second and final reading. Because what he's, what he's requesting is, is a rezoning of the property to low-density single-family residential. And currently, there are three townhouse lots based on the long history involving this property, and it's a long history. In order to implement the single-family home that he wants to construct on the property, there needs to be a unity of title, combining the three lots, townhouse lots, together as one, so he can build a single- as one, so he can build a single-family home.
But that happens later.
But that's coming, that's second and final reading, you'll see the unity of title agreement in the package.
Yeah, John Campbell's done the drawings for that, so that's all been completed. And then the house that is going on a lot had to be a particular size to fit the lot, because it's, it's a very odd-shaped lot. So the city has the plans of that, if you want to look at it, to see how it's going to fit in there.
Good.
Okay.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you, everybody.
Congratulations to you.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else have anything they want to comment on this item? Bring it back to the dais, closed public hearing.
I just have, I just have a comment to make, so that the gentleman understands. I'm only asking because people will ask me, so I just want to be prepared to answer. Thank you.
Need a motion on the ordinance 01-219 and 02-2019.
We need to vote on these separately, is that correct?
Yes, but we need a motion on one of them, just to start off on the first one.
Sure thing. I'd like to make a motion to support ordinance number 01-219.
And I second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Morrison and a second by Mrs. Raymond to support 01-2019. Call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown.
Four.
Mayor Hoag.
Four.
Councilmember Morrison.
Four.
Councilmember Randalls.
Four.
Councilmember Raymond.
Four.
Okay, we're looking for a motion on 02-2019.
Mr. Mayor, I'll go ahead and make a motion to support 02-2019.
And I second it.
We have a motion by Mr. Morrison and Ms. Raymond again on 20-2019. Call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown.
Four.
Mayor Hoag.
Four.
Councilmember Morrison.
Four.
Councilmember Randalls.
Four.
Councilmember Raymond.
Four.
Okay, that completes item three. Congratulations, Dennis. Item number four, ordinance number 05-2019, International Property Code, Mr. Garganese. This is first reading.
I'll find the ordinance in a second.
On your screen.
It's on the screen? No, it's not. It's the last document on the media.
Run it on the screen, can't we run it on the screen?
No, I don't have it on the screen, I got it. Yep, ordinance 05-2019, an ordinance of the City of Cape Canaveral, Florida, adopting the 2018 International Property Maintenance Code as amended herein, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, incorporation into the code, severability, and an effective date. This is first reading of this ordinance. By way of just general background, the city currently has adopted the 1998 version of the International Property Maintenance Code, and that code continues to serve the city as its property maintenance code, so forth, you know, in the code book. This ordinance proposes to adopt the 2018 edition of the International Property Maintenance Code. The International Property Maintenance Code is a code that's created by a council called the International Code Council, made up of, you know, groups of individuals and experts like, like us, that deal with these types of property maintenance issues, and they continuously review the International Property Maintenance Code and update it every couple of years. And the most current addition is 2018. Now, the International Code Council promulgates these codes, and it's up to individual municipalities to choose, to decide whether or not they want to adopt the, the most recent version of the code. And tonight, staff is proposing that council indeed adopt the most recent version of the International Property Maintenance Code. However, in order to do that, it was necessary for staff and myself to review the International Property Maintenance Code for consistency with Florida law and consistency with the existing city code. So in the body of the ordinance, you will see various underlining and striking out and, you know, not, not adopting certain sections of the International Property Maintenance Code, because in Florida, it would not be appropriate to do so. For example, the International Code Council not only adopts a property maintenance code, they adopt building codes for industry to look at and adopt. It would not be appropriate for the city to adopt that building code, because the city is obligated under Florida law to follow the Florida Building Code. Likewise, the city is required to follow the Florida Fire Prevention Code. So it would be inappropriate to adopt the separate Code Council's fire, fire prevention code. So those types of edits are in the body of, of the ordinance itself. In addition, in order to streamline and provide consistency regarding notices, you will see a lengthy notice provision that we would be adopting, not the notice provision in International Property Maintenance Code, because we're trying to mirror the notice provision for code violations similar to Chapter 162 Florida statutes for, for consistency. Those, those are very just technical amendments that are being, being proposed. Also, when you're dealing with property maintenance code, you have to, you know, if staff cites, just like a regular code enforcement violation, there needs to be a tribunal in which to hear the code cases. In this particular case, staff is recommending, based on, I think, some conversations that council had last year, to implement a special magistrate process for purposes of hearing international property maintenance code violation cases. And there's a detailed technical provision in the body of the ordinance that would establish a special magistrate for purposes of enforcing the International Property Maintenance Code. You know, in, in addition, while not specifically set forth in the ordinance in detail, you need to understand that this document that's being proposed to be adopted by reference with the changes that are in the body of the ordinance. Very technical, I don't know if we want to get into the weeds, so to speak, even though weeds are covered by International Property Maintenance Code, but I'd be happy to address any, any specific questions you have regarding this ordinance.
But community gardens may not be in the front yard. But that's reserved for the Florida Legislature.
Okay.
I'm, I'm, that's, that's my brief summary.
I have a, I know the council has asked for some, a little bit more teeth to enforce some of these issues that we're having in the city. And my question is for Mr. Dickey. Does this updated IPMC provide you the teeth that you, not trying to indicate that nothing has happened in the past, but does it provide you the teeth that you need to address some of these issues that we are talking about, especially on A1A?
Yeah, Mr. Brown, that's a good question, and I think my professional opinion is a very short and quick and sweet yes. You know, if I were to show you the 1998 IPMC, what we're using now, it's about 15 pages. It's about 12, 12 pages of substance, and there's not a lot of detail and meat in that, as opposed to what you have in front of us today, tonight. We have a lot more meat, and there's a lot more detail and specifics that our code officers can use when they're, when they're talking to property owners and homeowners. So yes, again, rather than get into the weeds, I can tell you that this will be a tool that our code enforcement officers can use on a daily basis, and it will be something that, you know, right now, there's a lot of, I don't want to say negotiations, but there's a lot of discussions and cajoling and, and, and trying to get property owners to do things that, that we would like them to do.
Well, this, A, this gives more tools, B, the special magistrate is a tighter process. As council may recall, during the budget workshops period and budget discussions, we also talked about changing the code enforcement code, if you will, that, and bringing the special magistrate process into that as well. I think, I understand what you're saying, I don't disagree with you. I think our challenges here are the same ones they've always been. We have a certain part of people of the community that do not wish to abide by the codes, and they're constantly looking for opportunities to exploit any loopholes or, or any interpretations that they think benefit them. And you will continue to hear complaints about staff being properly assertive in those kinds of situations, and we would urge the city council to stand tall when you're on the street or in Publix or in one of the restaurants when somebody starts to talk.
I also have a question, Mr. Green. The 2018 edition, are we gonna, especially on A1A, are we going to notify business owner that there's a new sheriff in town and it's a new edition of 2018? Because I know some properties, I don't know how it reads on exterior walls, that I see properties that are basically rusting out, rusting out. Now, I don't see on, when it speaks of interior walls, rusting or rotting, are we really going to have some teeth, we can go and say, hey, if you don't do something with this building, foreclosure, or I mean, putting levee lanes on it? Because I know particular buildings, I mean, they're rusting out.
Yeah, unfortunately...
What have we done in the past with the rusting building?
I, I think, Mayor Pro Tem Brown, I'm going to use the phrase with you, just be patient and watch. And if you're not satisfied, knock on my door.
I have a question. I'm wondering, when the code enforcement officer goes out, do they take this with them and show the resident the exact law? I mean, I'm curious, I really don't know, I've never been, I've never had a problem.
I, I would encourage Councilmember Raymond and any of the other council members, if you'd like to spend a little bit of time with one of our code enforcement officers and do a ride around, that could be a very interesting way to spend a half a day.
But I think that my time and talents could be used in a more positive way, thank you.
But the bottom line is, yes, of course they do.
Yeah, that, yeah, when, when they're filling out...
It's a no-brainer, we don't walk up and say, hey, y'all, go ahead and move that.
I don't know, I, well, what I'm getting at is, do they actually take the whole code or do they just take one piece of paper? I'm not sure.
They have access to the city website and the code book on their iPads, and they should be pulling that up and showing people. Additionally, they have cell phones that are city-provided also, and they can pull those up via their cell phones. So the answer to your question is yes.
Well, I just didn't know. Thank you very much for the answer.
Yeah, they, they hand out warnings and notices of violation, and all, and all those documents include specific code references on what the issue is.
Perhaps I would ride with Robin, but probably not Brian.
They have all the IT necessary to make anything work, Angela. It's, they got, they got iPads and everything with them when they go out, so they, they got it all right there, just like you got it on your screen on your monitor right there.
Thank you very much, I haven't been in that field before, thank you.
They have it, but, it, it's something that we brought up, this was 12, 15 years ago, we did the first international code, and we used it for a while, but it got kind of like where it's not enforceable.
Stale.
As what it should be, and this would be, this would be a better toolbox item.
Twenty years is a long time.
But miracles do take a little bit longer.
Takes time, so.
But 20 years is a long time, we need to update.
Yeah, well, should have been there 30 years ago.
If you'd like to talk to me, I will share reasons why it took 20 years, you might be surprised.
I think I understand, thank you.
Anybody have anything?
I hadn't been on the council before.
Okay, you through, Angela?
I'm finished, thank you.
Okay, there.
Mayor, I would like to speak for this ordinance. I read the book twice, and Todd, when you were building official, you and I talked about this 20 years ago. We tried to pass it then, it had some problems. It didn't meet ours because we had a code enforcement board. And a code enforcement board is made up of your neighbors, and it, it takes a different situation to, to correct some of our blighted areas, to be real honest. Section 302 in exterior property areas, that's, you mentioned that, Mayor Pro Tem, and it talks about section 304 about the exterior structure. There's about four pages that goes on unsafe conditions. It addresses everything from the siding and masonry joints, components, anchories to the floor, talks about roofing, flooring, veneer, overhang, everything is cited right there, so they can say, well, it looks right here, exterior walls are not anchored to the supporting, pretty clear to me. Todd, I've worked with you on this thing for years, and we just never were in a position to really bring it forth and, and hire a magistrate, which is a, an unbiased individual that simply says, doesn't say that, okay, then that's what we have to do. And it puts real teeth in there. I read through this, I do have some questions. We have the ability to adopt all, part, or some of this as a local thing. There's areas in here that we will have to, like the height of grass that's left vacant. We have to put in our height of grass. So somebody will have to fill in the blanks that this gives a blank space for.
Supposed to be filled in, if you look at, you know, page five of seven of the ordinance, with respect to weeds, 302.4 would be revised to insert in excess of 12 inches. I mean, that's a, that's a local issue and a local decision for council.
Something's already been done.
So yes, we've done that.
Okay, well, I feel very strong.
They have to strip it out, but we can implement part of that in our...
I, that's what I mentioned, we can implement part, all, or none. So I, I see it being very, very official. I was just visiting for a few minutes today in a complex, and there was 11 broken windows replaced with boards. And when you go to this area about exterior, it certainly tells you that that's not acceptable, about stairways, decks, benches, and balconies, doors, some doors are nailed shut in that complex.
That's what this is all about.
And, and when the renter comes, says, you know, I got a problem, it also addresses bolts, which I had never read about, that talks about windows here. I, I just feel very strong, this is needed, this will probably be the biggest change that we've made in the city in many, many years to attempt to get rid of the blight that we, it talks about doors, everything is, and I read the whole thing, as you can see, and, and, and it's very good, it talks about decks, balconies, exterior doors, even talks about section on windows here, interior structure.
You gotta have screens, Rocky.
Huh?
You gotta have screens even, so it's, it's pretty stiff. But it's, it's going to be a good tool for them guys to work with, so.
I just wish we could have done it 20 years ago.
Well, we did, but it wasn't as strong as it is today. This is implemented through people legislative act, it's not something that we just do.
They do about every three years.
Well, the legislature does that, that's what them boys do.
This was last brought up to date in 17, and it was 18 when it finally passed.
Okay.
I'm very much in favor. I'm very much in favor of adopting this, I feel that people today should not have to live in such squalor, and I have witnessed it personally inside and outside of our properties, and thank you very much, I really appreciate this, because this is something that really, this is one of the reasons why I ran to run for this position, thank you.
We got some areas that we need some attention. Okay, Russ.
Yep, I just want to echo, as you can hear, all the council's passionate about this, and I, this is a beautiful cohesion of, you can go back to the surveys and see that code enforcement issues was a big challenge for our community, it's a big pain point. We've heard, you can go back to our strategic planning meeting, it was brought up as a major pain point, some of the things we're hearing tonight, if you didn't attend that meeting, are still happening. It's an excellent way to kick off the year, in my opinion, and you heard long-timers who've been here a while, longer than me, who said, you know, wish we would have done it a long time ago. It's like updating your software on your computer, we're working on an archaic legacy system here, and so I'm excited to see this get pushed through. So the, the people have spoken, staff has, has put together and worked hard to make this a success, and I think this is one issue that the council and the mayor, amongst many, but this is one that if you had to rank, I'm going out on a limb, we'd probably all rank as, as a top one that we all agree with, it comes up in our meetings, so... So, again, there's no better topic to, to get this cleaned up. And we will be patient and watch the miracle unfold, if you will. But the, the code enforcement, it's, it's gonna take time and patience, and I thank the, the staff for meeting with me today, and, and I got a chance to express my concerns with the city attorney and city manager as well. And I am for this. I am in support of this, definitely. The IPM C code, the only thing, and we've got a second reading on this, that jumped out, that maybe Anthony you can speak to, or David, was how we can get comfortable, because this is new out of the gates, a new concept that we want to make sure we do it right, is with this special magistrate essentially coming in as, acting as a judge, right, one person, and, and making some tough decisions within our community, that the language in, it's page two of seven, and attachment two, under Article nine, section A there. I don't know if, if that's it. It's towards the back. When we get in, and maybe it makes sense to do this on the second reading, so we can all sleep on it, but write out to say, how can we word this? The city manager certainly needs, in my opinion, the flexibility to be able to make a quick decision. If you've got a code enforcement issue, the way I understand is, we would contract a special magistrate, and a lot of that language be in there. But in the event that special magistrate could not be there, he needs the authority to move quickly, because as Councilmember Raymond expressed, if you live next to these types of properties that are in violation, or the rusting buildings, you want it fixed quickly. And we often see delay in tabling of the boards, and it's all with goodwill. But unfortunately, the property sits there, and staff gets a lot of, hey, you guys aren't doing anything. And if you actually peel the onion back, they're working very hard and handcuffed to a, an outdated code. So, I'd like to work with council and, and the staff to maybe, not, not a substantial change, but to say, how, how can council appoint the magistrate, but then also reserve the right, or the city manager, in a special event where he needs to move quickly, also has that administrative or executive authority to fill it in? If we could get something there, I think this is a slam dunk for our, for our city, so. And if the council doesn't want that, I, it's not a major issue.
Yeah, I, I think unless the city attorney disagrees with what I'm about to say, or what I end up saying, the way we would approach that is, we will ultimately enter into, we'll go through an RFP process, we'll enter into negotiations for a services contract, and part of the service contract will stipulate a designated person to be the special magistrate, and will also specify that during his or her absence, that there would be an alternate that the firm or, they would provide to meet the needs of the cities, so that we can keep the business moving onward, if you will, and get the deals with, the matters dealt with timely. So, I think what we could do then, in some, is we'll make it part of the, the process, the contract, that we ask the city council to approve with a special magistrate. We'll provide a lot of details on an alternate to serve in the absence of.
I would, can I go one, one, one step farther? Because I drafted this language. My intent was, in most cases, the city council was, is gonna establish that primary-
Okay.
-special magistrate, and we'll have a contract which lays out the terms of, of their engagement to serve as a special magistrate. But there are, but even if you retain a firm, there will be some instance where the firm has a conflict of interest, which, if one lawyer has a conflict, they all have a conflict. There may, there may be scheduling problems with getting the primary special magistrate to, to handle a particular case that requires to be, requires some timeliness. So, the thought behind it was to give the manager the ability in those situations to then go out and find another special magistrate to handle the particular conflict case, or scheduling conflict case, so we don't delay the due process of, of processing the case forward. So, my intent was to try to, that's why it says city council or city manager, to have that flexibility. So, I mean, I hear what you're saying, Wes, and you and I talked a little bit about it before the meeting, and if council's fine with that, I can go back and, with the manager, and just clean up that language a little bit, so we're addressing every possible contingency. Because the last thing you want to do is, is be on the verge of processing a case, and it has to be done within a certain time period, and then, lo and behold, the special magistrate says, oh, based on what I just heard, I think I have a conflict of interest. I have to recuse myself from the case. We need that quickly, and, you know, and the manager, you know, because we don't need to schedule a public hearing, public meeting and all, we, with the board, we, he can move quicker.
Wouldn't that be done kinda first? If we had a case and a magistrate was already an, an, an agreed magistrate, wouldn't he already realize when he sees that he would be in a conflict?
Sometimes, yeah. Many times. Sometimes not. Sometimes the fact becomes known during the hearing process, in which they're gonna have to step back and declare here, here, a conflict at that moment. You, you just never, you just never know. Some, right, some are evident, you know, based on the name of the particular party. Oh, we can't handle that particular case. Or a witness.
I understand.
Yeah. Trying to keep the flexibility, so we don't run-
It happened before.
So, we don't run into that problem we had with, with the unsafe building case, where we didn't have a board that had a quorum. Remember, we played around with getting the code enforcement board put in on an interim basis, so we, we could afford a timely hearing to the violator? I mean, those things come up, and we're trying to, trying to address that, so we're not delaying the process.
Mayor, could I ask?
Anybody else got something else?
City, well, go ahead.
No, I just, I concur with Councilman Morrison. And I just want to thank staff, because I know you put a lot of work into it. Dave, city manager, Anthony, all the work that you've done. Because I think that's what Angela said, and this is one of the most important things that we've been dealing with the last couple of years, and I just want to thank you all for what you've done.
Mayor, my question would be to city manager first. Okay. Would a continuing contract request for proposal, like we do with the contractors for the masonry and things, be an answer whereby if somebody's on vacation and we really need him, we can go to-
Yes.
Candidate two?
Yes. Yeah, well, in, in the-
And the firm would have an offer.
First, in, generally speaking, it would be part of the same firm, you know, just as we do with the city attorney, as an example. Often, someone else comes to a meeting with us, or sits, sits in here when Anthony's on one of his great trips.
Which don't happen very often.
No, not very often at all. But, yeah, we, we're mindful, and we, we will sort that out and make it work very, very seamlessly. Or as seamlessly as we're capable of making it work, yes.
I think it'll work out. They'll get it all earned out.
Yeah, thank you. Acting as a judge capacity, I think we'll get it right. And it's, most judges are elected or appointed by someone who is elected, and if we can just keep that spirit in this, we're in the right direction. So, thank you.
Okay. Public hearing. Open it to the public. Anybody want to comment on this, or ask a question? Don't understand what we're doing. That's, hearing nothing. Yes, ma'am.
Will we be able to get a copy of that?
Can we, can you?
Will we be able to get a copy of that, that we're talking about this?
Uh, that is on the, on the website, is it not? It's on the website. Mm-hmm. Just go to our website, and you'll see it. It's there, the whole book. Hearing nothing. We'll close public comment and come back to the dais for a motion.
Mayor, I certainly would. Randalls would like to move to approve ordinance number 05-2019 at the first reading. That's the ordinance we're now discussing.
Second.
Yeah, we had a dual second, but we had a motion and a second on 05-2019 for first reading. Could you call the roll, please?
Mayor Pro Tem Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hoag?
Four.
Councilmember Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Randalls?
Four.
Councilmember Raymond?
Four.
Yeah, that concludes our agenda. We can get into some reports if we can make it nice and short for the manager tonight.
Promise.
Um, Anthony, did you have anything?
I have no report.
Nothing? David, we'll save you the lunch.
I was just gonna say, I report that I would ask city council to be brief.
I will.
You can burn your own time.
Thank you.
Very, very.
Okay, I know you got a limit.
I'm ready.
Who are you gonna burn tonight?
Just wait. Take it easy, patience. I want to wish everyone a Happy New Year, and hope that it's prosperous and good to you. I went last night to the Space Coast League of Cities Board of Directors meeting, and I promoted and sponsored CHS for approval as far as an associate member. And that event was at the Harris Corporation. Very nice event. I was also reinstalled as a member of the Board of Directors. Let's see. This month, we went to that meeting that we had on rezoning, that Dave Dickey did very well. I complimented him on that. And I just want to reassure all of our residents that we are doing our very best for them. After all, you are the people that put us in office. And there's no poem this month, and I want to tell you why. I think that my time and talents can be used in different ways, and more appropriate ways. And we are going to get our own poet laureate, and we're working on that. We have applications, and we will be reviewing those. So, you will have an official poet laureate, the first in Brevard County, I would like to add. Thank you. And I want to thank our staff for all the hard work. That Molly Thomas has done a lot of the work. And I think, again, this is something to just promote Cape Canaveral. We're leaders here. Thank you. Everyone knows our name, I'm told.
Is the clock go? Because I, I wasn't gonna be brief.
You gotta have a minute.
Okay.
I was having a brief.
I want her two minutes. I don't know if you've seen this new magazine or not, but it's Brevard Delivers. This is about the history of Brevard County for quarter four, which just ended a few days ago. But the important thing is, it, without, I'll let you read it, but there is, each, each time this is publicized, our city, through the efforts of the city manager, and Josh, and whoever makes it happen, has a quarter page in here. And this one, very good, you can't see it from where you're at, but it shows about the new seal, about the mayor, the canoe in here, just highlights the city, which is a good thing. But even more important, it says to the county, we want to be part of you. And that's an important thing, because when you go to the county or county manager's office and talk to them, he says, thank everybody for buying a quarter page, or whatever it is. And that's your idea, boss. Thank you.
The mayor's fitness challenge.
I, I'm gonna get to that.
Okay, good. I don't want you to forget.
Current, current project, I'm, use, and I guess this is produced by Jeff. Are you still in the building? This, this update, real quick, it says current projects in the city of Cape Canaveral. And this usually happens when you're in the line at Publix, or you're in the line at post office waiting to get something, and the person says, tell me quick what's happening in Cape Canaveral. Well, where are you? I say, well, right here. I got it, we got three things. I'm gonna give you a sheet. We're talking about the A-1A mast arms, we're doing the corridor improvements in A-1A, and the list station on Holman Road, and the rest of it, and you take it home, the lady's ready for you at the window. All you need to know. And that is a quick summarization. Josh, I don't know if you put that together, it says, but that is just real quick, and the person goes away saying, wow, wow. And then he can do the same thing at the coffee shop the next morning. I will pass on some of these, because I will try to be brief. I go tomorrow, I've been working with the Volkswagen settlement, kind of important. It's with the East Central Florida Regional Planning Council. Oh, and I am probably gonna take the commissioner too, our new district, two commissioner tomorrow over there, and introduce him to the people. He's, he chose that. This has to do with the Volkswagen back in October, the, the second of 2017, when they was entered into a settlement for, with Volkswagen, where they had doctored a little bit with the mechanical features, and defeated some of them, and it was getting a little mileage, it was a little bit, and really was true. And there was 580 vehicles. They were fined, in this case, they agreed to provide 16 billion, 16 billion dollars in their share of the fine. And it's run downhill to us at the East Central Florida Council. And we've got some, 2.9 billion dollars was created, the mitigation trust fund. So, power's much higher than, than our local area is trying to figure out how to settle this. But it's coming down, so there will be some settlement. A lot of it's gonna go to transit. Just a real quick, we got, next to the last one, so you can sum it up. Every five years, the TPO, which is Transportation Planning Organization, which is made up of a representative from every city, and I have the privilege of representing Cape Canaveral, we have to do a five-year plan. And it, it's designed on where do we think, and where do we want to be, five years now in the way of tra, transportation. That's available, and it's on, you can get a hard copy, or you can do a survey like we did with our community. But what you're all waiting for, I stopped by and picked up the mayor's fitness challenge today, cards. And I guess I'll give them to you to hand out. And this is, the fact they're gonna be out here when? Saturday the eighth, December the eighth?
February second, or February second.
First week of February, I think it is.
Isn't it?
Yeah, it is the second.
First week of February is the first one. Don't remember.
I just want to see if you were listening, man.
I signed up. Thank you. Are you? Are you signed up?
No, it hadn't been time to sign up yet.
Yes, it has.
It's too late to sign up. You better hurry up.
So, in any event, here's some-
You want to get a t-shirt?
They're on your way. And I picked them up to printing, and encourage all of us to be there. You're next up, Wes.
Wait, wait, wait. Where the, where the copy, Lou?
Oh, that's East Coast Central Florida Region.
Well, you were reappointed today.
Well, yeah, there weren't a lot of volunteers.
That's all hell.
Go, Wes.
Thank you. Rezoning workshop, thanks staff for putting all that together. That was the most well-attended meeting I've ever seen here, and a packed standing room only. And, yes, I, the people spoke in that, a few of them, you know, it was a, it was a mix, a little bit of friction, but one of the things that stuck with me is, is there something we can do? And we are, I can tell you, every one of these council member and mayor was there. We heard you, and we're working hard. And the weekly update, if you read it, the, the next steps are laid right out there. So, thank you very much. Cape Canaveral Explore is another magazine we're starting to see floating around. They've been doing it with Cocoa Beach, and like Councilmember Randall said, with the Brevard Delivers magazine. Check out the Cape Canaveral Explore. The city is putting information in there. Mayor has an article in there. I had an opportunity to submit one, but I know you want to know what's going on. That's another outlet for you. Printed materials, you can pick those up, I think, at local businesses as of now. And, yes, looking forward to a, a great year. Happy New Year to everyone. Very proud of our city and what we're doing in regards to a lagoon and water. Community engagement continues to improve, and safety and A-1A issues are heading in the right direction. So, thank you.
I challenge all the residents of Cape Canaveral to go ahead and sign up for that fitness challenge. I was just told by Gustavo and Josh that kids can actually sign up. I don't think I'm the only one, but I noticed that I put a little weight on over the holidays, so I'm out there working early to get ready for this fitness challenge. Nothing drives real estate values more than probably crime, good parks. And I'd like to see the city of Cape, Cape Canaveral not only be the fittest city in Brevard County, but one of the fittest cities in, in the state of Florida. And you can bet that'll spark a lot of interest for our area. So, I just want to thank the council once again for everything they've done, and look forward to 2019. Thank you.
David, do you have anything you want to comment? David, do you have anything you want to comment? I don't have much to say after all that, because the fitness challenges are really a lot of fun if you're not involved in it. We have a lot of fun doing it, and it's, it's, I know Mike is very, very active, and Angela has been real active with us, and it, we'll get Rocky, we'll get him involved. But it's fun, and it's just all in fun to try to, try to be the most fit city, and you don't really have to do anything but have fun, and, of course, we enjoy it. We have good, good ventures. I'm, I'm very proud of our city, and I applaud our staff and our management, and Jeff has got a plate full that I don't know how he handles it. I look at it all the time, and I, I'm out there, I was out today watching the force main going through the, through the area down in front of where Angela lives, all kinds of action going on. So I just kind of keep tabs on it, and it's, it's coming along good, so we ought to be, we ought to be getting out of there soon. The trailer park could probably be glad when we're gone. If y'all haven't seen it, it's, it's quite a thing to watch. It's unbelievable what they can do. And I don't have much to report, because these guys reported everything I know, but I would like to ask, you would like to make a comment, sir? Nothing? Okay. Our service?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you're happy. Everybody's cool. Anybody have anything before we close? If not, go ahead. Speak up. Give you the opportunity.
Jeff, sir, from Bayport. I'm just reminded, seeing the beginning of this meeting today, what you guys have to tolerate to be public servants. I appreciate all your efforts. Just because Archie Bunker wants to come up here and yell at you doesn't mean you're not doing a good job. So we do appreciate you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it, Jeff.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. I would like to just wish everybody good night and be safe. Meeting adjourned.
The mayor didn't tell us who.